Let's call the workshop to order. Clark, with Ray, the alliance, please.
In accordance with the South Carolina Code of Laws, 1976, Section 30-4-80-D, as amended, notification of the meeting and the meeting agenda were posted at least 24 hours prior to the meeting on the County Council Building at a publicly accessible place on the county website, and a copy of the agenda was provided to the local news media and all persons or organizations requesting notification, as well as on the building at the City Hall for the city of Hardyville.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Fulbright, take over the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, your workshop, first item, we need to discuss is Project Salmon. You remember the folks who are involved in that. Mr. Peter can probably give you a quick summary about what has happened over the last few weeks with this project, and then we have Ryan Romano here to get into the detail with me.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of council, Mr. Chairman. As we discussed at the last meeting, the project that we're involving here, which will have a groundbreaking with the governor here on Thursday, has been in the works since, I would say, October, getting all the inducement resolutions, the background work, getting all the grants that were coming down to make this happen. This is a manufacturing facility that has projected 500-plus jobs, averaging, with benefits. They plan to do it as this project has evolved in phases on an existing multi-county park down at the southern end of Hardyville, in dealing with the various attorneys for the developer, the owner of the property that has the existing fee-in-lie-of-taxes agreement. The flavor has changed slightly in that the structure is now going to be, the consideration or the SSRCs being requested have remained the same, but the structure of those has changed slightly. You may recall that the existing FLO agreement has a 40% special source revenue credit. They asked for an additional 10% to cover the cost of their outfit equipment, and promised a certain amount that will go along with that, and they have now asked for phasing of those. So we had to kind of modify the documents that you approved at first reading a couple of meetings ago to reflect the phasing, the commencement dates of when they will begin putting that equipment in, which has to do with how long they have to reach their goals to avoid having a clawback. So we had to manipulate those little terms in there. Work in progress, got the latest version on Wednesday, has just a couple of little tiny tweaks in it, but that's the basic structure that we have worked on. Part of that is as a result of the attorney for the owner wanting to divide up, if you will, the existing fee-in-lie for an entire property into segments and phases, so each will have their own tracking for those. So that has required, we're not dealing with that audit yet, but that'll require amendment down the way. So it has been a work in progress, but it's all moving forward. It's all basically in line with what they said they were going to do when they came to us, and it's an exciting project because it's a manufacturing, not a distribution, so we have high-paying jobs, good-paying jobs coming in. Unless you have any questions, I will let Ray explain to you what you have looked at in front of you, and what the proposed changes are going to be, which are very slight and a red line that we'll bring forward, which have to do with making certain that the new project ends up with all of the special source revenue credits that it's supposed to have, and all of the responsibilities to avoid the clawback that it's supposed to have.
Thank you.
No, okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you for having me. So as David explained, again, if you recall, this property is going to locate in a multi-county park that already has a FLO on it. So the developer for that deal, we did a couple of years ago, they built a building that has FLO subject to it, and that building has a 40% credit already subject to it. The deal that the county had with the manufacturing folks that were coming in is that on everything they're responsible for, their new investment, that is, they would have a 50% FLO credit, the special source revenue credit. The documents we received had a couple of things that we wanted to tweak. First, they wanted to change not just their own deal to have 50% on their investment, but also change the underlying deal with the developer that owns the building they'll be located in to bump that credit from 40% to 50. So we recommend pushing back on that, staying with consistency sake with the building, keeping it at a 40% credit, and then keeping our promise to the developer that we'll give them 50% credit on everything they invest. So everything they're responsible for, their personal property, their equipment they put in, that's still having the 50% credit, but for consistency sake, for the building that we've already granted the 40% credit for, we're suggesting keeping a 40% credit on that building. So in the documents, you'll see there's a mention of the quote additional 10% credit that was an attempt to sweeten the underlying deal that we've already struck with the developer that owns the building, that we recommend pushing back on, but still giving a 50% credit for everything that is coming in as new investment for part of this deal. The other small change we recommended is they had a concept in documents that if they didn't meet their investment and their job numbers, we would proportionately reduce the benefit of the credit, so they have seven years to make this investment. If they met 50% of it, in the documents that they provided for us, we would then reduce the benefit of that credit by 50% going forward. What we have suggested is that if they've only met 50% at the end, when we're measuring this at the end of the seven years, yes, we're going to reduce the benefit by 50% going forward, but we also want to look back at the fact that we've been basing a benefit for seven years on the idea they're going to meet 100% of what they committed to. We should also have a proportionate look back where we recapture the incentives we've been giving based on that 100% goal. So I'll stop there and answer any questions I can.
Mr. Van Giesem?
Not at the moment. I'm thinking through some things.
Councilman Rowl?
No questions at the present, but as we talked more about this, there could be things popped, but I don't have anything at the moment.
These are existing buildings, correct?
Yes.
Usually, were the floors put down there to handle this manufacturing?
I believe so, but again, if they install upfitting, that's going to be part of their new investment, and that would have a 50%. So if they're expending money to make sure it can handle the equipment, then that's part of the investment that they're going to put in.
Okay, so if they have to strengthen the floors, that's part of it, essentially?
That's part of it, yes.
And previously, Claris had a farpo, I guess, and Hardyville had a farpo, that one of these, one of the houses was right on top of what they'd built. Has that been taken care of?
I would have to check with, yeah.
You wouldn't have checked?
Yeah.
Okay, because I see it's about 300 feet from the back of a house to the closest portion, so I just wanted to make sure that that's taken care of.
No, we'll definitely check with that.
Okay.
It's good to know.
Thank you. And Mr. Peter?
If I might add, the latest red line changes that I discussed, Mr. Romano just discussed, came in prior to the package, I mean, after the package was sent out to you. So it would be our request when we get to this agenda item, that you, if you see fit to want to move it forward at second reading, that you approve the documents with the amendments that were discussed in the workshop section, so that we can have those red lines incorporated in what we'll have at the third reading at the end of March, or the next meeting in March.
13, 17.
Yes, sir. But they're basically to change, as we said, the little table in the recapitulation of the FLO that says, instead of 10% additional, it says now 50% of the whole amount, and a corresponding change in the body of the document, and a little bit of wordsmithing in the orders where we're now calling it, quote, "a parcel C" building, instead of just a parcel C. So we're kind of further delineating and putting for emphasis what we're dealing with in this particular document.
And you'll provide that for us tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll be happy to assist, to remind, if y'all could pass it, if you want to move it forward, that you move it forward with the addition of the amendments at third reading that we spoke about in the workshop.
And since we're new, at least except for one, is this normal that we have a work in progress as we go along?
This one has become a little more...
And I'm not, I'm just trying for my own information. I would say it's not normal, Mr. Chairman, but it does happen from time to time, and this is a result of, we've got two different interests, the building owner and then the new tenant at play, so there's a lot of back and forth involved in this.
A lot of birds and cats.
Yes, sir.
And we have a little bit of time pressure being put on us from Columbia folks that want to get this in place and moving forward. Normally, we would probably wait it another week or two, but we have things going on this week.
Right. Okay, thank you.
If there aren't any other questions, I would appreciate you guys letting me come down and chat.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Drive safe when you go home. Mr. Fulbright, next, code enforcement?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we discussed code enforcement, I believe, at your last meeting, and you deferred to action to it potentially for this evening. The chairman thought it was right to have a workshop on this prior to the regular meeting. It is in your regular session agenda for action later this evening, resolution to potentially hire a firm of finger, Mel Nickbrooks in Labrous, PA. The proposal is before you again, and we have the attorneys here for you to ask any questions that you may have for them, so that we can try to resolve any concerns or questions that you may have. Ultimately, this firm is represented in multiple municipalities and deep of county. We believe they're the right ones to review, give us advice on our ordinances so that we may better serve you with providing code enforcement, specifically with regard to the different functions that are animal control and fire codes and fire marshal duties, litter enforcement officers, and building and planning inspections, and just general code enforcement. So there's a lot there, but we know that we could probably use some advice on how to pull those things together, and so that we can be more efficient in trying to provide those services.
Mr. Van Giesem, you have any questions?
No, so I'm waiting on some stuff, some code enforcement about the animals, but no, I'm good right now.
Mr. Rowl?
Do you have some questions? I know it's wrong before us again tonight, but the rates, I think that's the thing that Councilman Arzillo was questioned about, to make sure that they're good for where we're going, to make sure that it covers what we need to be covered with it being the open-ended kind of scenario. So could we talk about that for a minute?
Yes, sir. Mr. Vice Chairman, thank you. We did specifically meet after you had voiced some of those concerns with Mr. Labrous and Ms. Ward, and I think they're here prepared tonight to speak to that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon.
Members of, members of county council, we were lucky enough after the meeting to get on a team call, Brittany and I did, with city administration and, excuse me, county administration and the county attorney, to kind of discuss some of the issues that we heard from y'all and what county council is really looking for in this proposal. So one of the things we did, and you'll see the amended proposal has been provided as part of your package, but we've tried to clarify exactly what we are doing, because that makes sense. Your concerns from the last meeting, when we looked back over and after hearing what y'all said, made perfect sense. It was a little bit open-ended, and it wasn't very specific as to what we would be delivering for the price. So one of the things that we wanted to do was clarify that for you. I think the best way to put it is the proposal that we originally presented was, you know, we're going to pop the hood, and we're going to see what's in there, and then we're going to come back to you to let you know what it's going to cost to fix everything that we see that's wrong. Instead, I think what we're looking at here, and we redesigned this, if you look at that third page of the specific scope, we've added a section that says that the amendments will be focused on one, clarifying the distinct roles of different code enforcement personnel, which means building inspectors, zoning, planning officers, fire marshals, and control officers, and allocating the investigatory and/or enforcement responsibilities over certain portions of the ordinances to them. That's one of the things that we need to make sure, because some officials will have some overlap in different areas of expertise, but it may be more, you don't necessarily want to put your building inspector in charge of your stormwater enforcement and your animal control officer to have to deal with fire code complaints. So one of the things we want to do is make sure that everybody in your staff, counting, I keep wanting to say city, because I keep staring at the Hardyville emblem there, so I apologize, everybody within your staff knows what their scope of responsibilities are, what falls on them is their primary obligation, but also who has secondary roles. Second thing was enhancing the enforcement capabilities of the ordinance. That was one of the things that Brittany, when she initially presented to y'all, showed you one simple change that could happen. What you can do is modify your general penalty provision of the code to provide not just an or, an either-or, but an and/or for what you could potentially be penalized for for a violation of code. So that's just one of those basic enhancement things we can do. And then finally, making sure that things are legally sound and compliant with South Carolina law, because as y'all know, with all local governments here, and I don't like to speak in generalities, but sometimes I'll have to, is that a lot of the ordinances are holdovers from decades and decades and decades ago. There have been changes at the state level, there have been changes at the local level, that you need to really reinforce those and make sure that they are compliant with existing state law. I mean, one of the most obvious examples is with tree preservation. We know that at the state level, tree preservation laws are, you know, can change pretty rapidly, and the enforcement abilities of local governments on lands that are tax agricultural are pretty limited when it comes to trees. So we want to make sure that when we're looking at your ordinances, we're kind of evaluating some of those aspects too, but not as thoroughly as the, you know, exactly what we told you we're going to be out here to do, and that is the making sure that your, the roles are compliant, that you've got the, you know, the right officers in charge, and that the people who are being sworn to do this have the ability to do it. One of the things that we are leaving out of this, and we want to make sure that there's no confusion here, is really substantive changes to the underlying ordinances. I know, Councilman Van Giesem, one of your concerns was the animal control ordinance, and what we had recommended as kind of that approach when we initially investigate into it, was this, this is a good example of something that we could find while we're in there, and we can make recommendations as to strengthening your animal control ordinance. The reality, and I think where we kind of had a little bit of pushback there, was we had, it's hard for us to estimate, once we get in there, how many of those little things we are going to discover and bring back to you, and it would be hard for us to estimate and budget all of those sorts of fixes at once. So this is really designed to, making sure that your code enforcement officers at this point know what their respective roles are, making sure that they have the capabilities under the ordinances to act within those spheres of influence or those spheres of responsibility, and then also making substantive recommendations as to future action for you. That future action would all be something that would come back before council, if that's what y'all choose to have, go back before council for any sort of adoption of an extended agreement there. The hourly rate that we put in there was in case you wanted us to come back to council meetings, to do these, to do any presentations, or to do something that is above and beyond the scope of the agreement. We've tried to be very clear about, you know, what we're going to do, what the process will be, and how we're going to handle it. We just, again, we're trying to be mindful of your budget while also making sure that we don't overcommit to doing something that we're not, we were not planning on doing. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm not talking for a while here, so happy to answer any questions you got.
Mr. Rowl?
No, I do think that some of the ordinances do need to be cleaned up to reflect 2025 and to make sure that we empower our people, not only the enforcement capabilities, but educate them as well to make sure that they're understanding what they are enforcing out there, and to make sure that we don't run into any issues to where we conflict with other state or federal agencies in there. So I assume this is part of what you all are doing to make sure, to take a look, what to add, delete, and go from there.
Yes, sir. What we're doing is primarily, we're looking at the officer, rather than the underlying law that they will be enforcing necessarily, but the empowerment, the empowerment ordinance of that officer, making sure that they are acting within the scope of their authority, and that they are being, and you're putting the best people in the roles to best carry out the ordinances that you have in place. Now, as we do that, I think it's important to recognize that we're going to look at something like your animal control ordinance and say, there are some substantive changes that could be made here in the future that we will, we'll recommend. You should look at your animal control. Maybe you'll need to look at your forestry, maybe you'll need to look at your litter control, maybe you'll need to look at a few of these other things, but those will all be subjects of future, future discussions with us, because I think it's, otherwise, what we could end up doing is committing to a wholesale ordinance rewrite for y'all, and that's not necessarily what y'all are budgeting for, asking for from us, and it's not, not what we are prepared to deliver for y'all right now. What we want to do again is look at the, look at the individuals in the enforcement. How do we make sure that you have the best people at your, on your staff, responsible for the, over the, responsible for the ordinances, and how can we best get them in a position where they can enforce them, you know, to the maximum extent effective? Again, just trying to streamline this approach as much as possible. And I have Brittany Ward with me again, who is, as y'all know, is very knowledgeable on these issues and can provide any additional insight if you have any additional questions.
Only thing additional I have is, we just want to make sure that as we're progressing doing this, that we don't leave any stones unturned or any gaps in there, because as you focus on the job or job description, making sure that the issue and the job descriptions coincide with each other, that way we don't mess, or that way we don't not take care of... of an issue that we're having in by looking at job descriptions.
And I understand, and I hate to keep going back to the animal control ordinance, but that's a great example. I mean, we have a general idea of one that, you know, you see what Beaufort County has, you see what, you can kind of look at what's done across the state, and you could try to incorporate that in there. But right now, what we're looking at is the scope of control of the animal control officers and making sure that we're clarifying those roles. But, you know, we're not getting into, because that can be a very expansive discussion. Okay, what are the running at large, how do we want to handle running at large? In Beaufort County, they deal with livestock as well during hurricanes. How are we, you know, I think it's, I don't want to say licensing of animals, but licensing of animals for hurricane purposes, disaster purposes. There's a, there are these things that may work in certain communities and may not work in others. That sort of discussion gets much more expansive, but what, again, what we're focusing on is the officers themselves, their ability to properly enforce the code that you have in place now, and making those changes that if they don't have those powers, that will give them the power to enforce what you have in place and better identify their respective roles and responsibilities. If, please.
Well, what else I was going to say is...
Excuse me. Are you finished?
Yeah. So Friday, I put together a task force committee, and it's basically all the rescues in Jasper County. We've included Tallulah from Beaufort County, we invited Hampton County and, to come in and just start going through the ordinances and see how we can maybe put them together. The counties would be similar, in other words. And is that helpful too? So if we have a whole list of, this is what we'd like to see, this is what we'd like to do, I'm sure that helps you guys, right?
It does. And it helps better show us what your, what the proposed end product would be if we did a full rewrite of the animal control ordinance, what you would want to have your end product be. But really, the way that we're, we're looking at this, at this particular proposal, is if, if y'all get called out for, I'm going to give a real life example that's happened in one of the jurisdictions locally. Police get called out and they see, they get called out for a drug deal gone bad. You go out there, they find a number of different mobile homes, RVs, other things on a site that's zoned for maybe one resident, residential structure. There is, you know, extension cords running all the way across the property. There is, you know, there's no sanitary sewer hooked up, there's, the water's discharging directly onto the ground. You have all sorts of different issues there, from, you know, you've got your criminal issues with the drug deal gone bad, you've got the zoning and planning issues with the number of structures on there. You have people living in sheds, you have people living in tents, you have people living in rundown RVs, you have your stormwater issues with, you know, the pollutants hitting the... So who takes the lead? Who's, who's got the responsibility to handle this? Who's the one who's supposed to write the tickets? It takes a collaborative approach, and it's important to know whose responsibility is primary there, who we're going to have, you know, try to lead the way. A lot of that happens internally, but it also helps if you have in your code, you know, very clear scopes of authority and defined roles. And we're trying to better suit and, or better situate the county for those sorts of events as we expect them to kind of continue to increase.
I think Councilman Ral covered it well.
It seems that, again, it's still open, and I'm confused. First of all, you talk about the ordinances, then you talk about employees, who's doing what. It's very clear, you know, when we were a small or county a few years ago, we, there were multiple, people had multiple jobs, and we have to get away from that. Now, I'll give you an example, which is the code enforcement. If you look at our code enforcement job description, I would say 90% of it is fire. And there's one little thing down there about code enforcement. Now, he's code enforcement, he's not supposed to go to fire. He's supposed to be code enforcement, which is different, right? Very simple. To me, I think the most important part is getting the ordinances, and then we can take it from there. I still think it's an open-ended thing. You're, you're looking underneath the hood and saying, this is what we think you should do. And then we, okay, do you want us to do it? And that's, that's what I don't like, because then you're going to put us on the spot for more money.
Well, and I think what we try to differentiate between is substantive code changes as to what y'all are enforcing. Again, like the animal control, to give an example, the running at large. You know, that is a state law about running at large. But I think your code, and I'm not overly familiar with your animal control ordinance, but I believe that your code does not really provide any sort of provision on running at large. Those are things that we may recommend, but what we will do is look at your animal control officer, look at your fire marshal, fire marshal, code enforcement, look at those, do a comprehensive analysis of your entire code of ordinances, make the changes that we think are necessary to, and present those to y'all for approval, that clarify the responsibilities and the roles and the obligations of those, and clarify how to enforce those particular ordinances that you have in place already. Not necessarily change your, the underlying ordinances yet, because I think that project, unfortunately, is a bigger project, and we would have to be, it's just hard to estimate the, you know, to open up your code of ordinances and look at every single one of your codes and say, this one needs this, this one needs this, this one needs this, from a substantive, because we'd have to discuss it, as Councilman Van Geesten has, has brought up. One of the things that you would want to do is discuss with Beaufort County and Hampton County, what all, you know, how do you want these things to work? So I think it would be a far more, that'd be a far more comprehensive approach, but based off of what we had heard from administration and from y'all last week, or, excuse me, last month, was to try to present you a proposal with its, you know, focused on code enforcement, and while we're in there, make suggestions to y'all about future things to consider. Again, like strengthening your animal control ordinance and perhaps strengthening some of the other ones that we see.
Wait, but if I might, to be clear, you're all proposing to draft ordinances that address the process of code enforcement.
But he hasn't said that. That's what I'm trying to...
It's in here. I mean, that's what I wanted, they actually have a sentence that says that the firm will proceed with drafting amendments after the discussion with you about the processes and roles.
But that was in phase two, I think. There were phases there, and phase, we only, we're only paying for phase one.
Well, what I encouraged along with Mr. Fulmer to do in our team's meeting was to take the actual written words and incorporate the phases of what you're doing in there so that you know what the base price is covering. The base price covers what he began, at the beginning of this, is the items of assess the ordinance, look at the roles of the code enforcement, look at the processes, draft amendments to fix those, make suggestions, or note suggestions along the way, what they see about the substantive matters of what it is that these codes are doing, whether that's animal control or litter control or whatever. And each of those would be subject to further discussion to determine what it is that the council wants to do with animals. Litter control ordinances, enforcement, those types, what is going to be lawful and unlawful. I understand that in shorthand, Richardson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So again, the, the end of phase one will include ordinances for this county council to approve and adopt, and those will be focused on the code enforcement aspects and those, you know, the, again, the enforcement and the procedural aspects. The phase two that we had brought up, and this is where we kind of, where we modified this, before I think it was more envisioned that we would present a lot of code ordinances as part of phase two. We want to focus on the actual code enforcement aspect in phase one and present you with ordinances to strengthen your staff's ability to enforce the ordinances that you have in place right now. Then at phase two, and then phase one would also include us looking at your general code and making recommendations as to strengthening the substantive parts, but the, you know, drafting those ordinances, the animal control, the full-scale rewrite of animal control or any revisions to that, would be something we would recommend to you, and if you decided you wanted to use us based off of what we provided to you during this first, first phase, that really focusing on the enforcement aspect of it and the code personnel, that would be up to y'all. But we would present you with recommendations so that if you chose to go with us, or if you chose to do the in-house, or if you chose to go with someone else, that you would have that ability. But right now, it's about trying to, again, clearly identify what y'all are going to get, and what we try to do is outline very clearly in this agreement that it would be, we're going to amend your code, amend your code to clarify the distinct roles of all your different code enforcement officers, to enhance their enforcement capabilities to extent consistent with South Carolina law, and to look and evaluate where there were any discrepancies in South Carolina law with your code enforcement personnel.
And I guess this is for the administrator. Do the codes presently have who does what? Is that something that we do?
Yes, sir. I don't believe it's clear at all, and that's why I think this is good to have as an assessment. We have to start somewhere with a base. I think we can get the good base with a lot of experience about what we need to do, and we can empower the existing employees we have with what they can do and get them up to speed with current state law. As you said, then there'll be suggestions about what we may want to do with the other ordinances, and we, at that point, to discuss with you whether we want to move forward with those, or whether we can do those in-house, or use other examples from other places, or whether we want to engage them for the second.
What's our process? What's the process you're going to use? Just look at the ordinances, or you're going to talk to us, you're going to talk to staff?
So for phase, this, what we're talking about here today, first thing we'll do is do a full review of your code ordinances. Make sure that we review them, find out the key sections that we think need to either be addressed, even if they're fine, look at those, bring those in, we'll talk with staff, we'll work with administration on that, because this really goes down, it's one of those aspects that is heavily on administration, because it's personnel, it's making sure that you have adequate time committed, and you have adequate personnel committed to the different tasks. So what we all want to do is say, all these things should fall under zoning and planning inspectors, and you have one individual who may be dealing with all of those and dealing with all the development agreements and everything else that you have. It just wouldn't be feasible for them to work with it. So we want to make sure that anything that we recommend works within your budgetary constraints and within the realities of your organization. So we would work heavily with administration. We would hope that administration would communicate with you through that at a workshop. It's one of the ways that we've tried to keep our costs down, is by limiting, you know, us coming to council to discuss these on a regular basis, because it's just, obviously, there's, there's an expense associated with that. So that's the process, we review, we make written recommendations, discuss them with administration, then present a proposed ordinance amendment that administration would bring to y'all for approval and discussion, and if you need us to come out here for one, we can certainly talk to administration about that.
Thank you. Is there any other questions?
Yeah. With that being said, should it, should we go this at the staff level to look at who's responsible for what, and then reverse it that way to go to you all to make sure that we're not, again, missing anything in translation? Should that be the way the process works?
Mr. Vice Chairman, we've had some discussion about our existing staff and how we do things currently, so I think that's up for discussion. We can, we can certainly bring the staff in to do that, empower them to be part of it. I think that would be a great idea.
And, Mr. Vice Chairman, a few months ago, I sat with members of your, your staff, your administration, and we had those sorts of discussions. We walked through what their, their scopes of responsibilities were, and there were some concerns internally, just about, you know, who, what sort of issues fell within whose, who's scope of authority and whose responsibility to deal with. So I think, I think staff, as the administrator says, has, has reached out to us to try to help them figure out and to identify what those responsibilities are.
Well, is there any other question?
I just want to tell you, code enforcement, I think, is the archie's heel of this county. We can do everything, put ordinances in, correct ordinances, be perfect. But if we don't, check on them, make sure they're being done, means nothing. We spend a lot of money for nothing. So this is a very important, I think. It's just that we have to make sure that we're getting what we want, right? And when you were first, it was like, okay, we're going to look under the hood, we're going to see it, and then we're going to tell you what we want to do. No, no product, no nothing. We're actually doing your bidding, to tell you the truth, an RFQ in reverse, I guess, RFP, excuse me. So anyway, that's it. In closing, I thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, would you just like to close up on that one? Just any comments, let's put it that way.
No, sir. I just, we think that we have worked with them and come up with a proposal that does give you a defined product, it gives us direction, and gives, empowers staff to know that you all are taking it seriously, because it's not an issue of staff not wanting to do the right thing, it's limited resources and empowering them to be able to do it. So I appreciate your kind consideration of it in the public session.
Okay. Thank you very much. On the third subject, which is chapter two, code ordinances. In the packet was the original ordinance I had and my proposal that I had put in, out in 2022, I think it was. Does anybody have any comments on that? Well, let me go start with, well, most of this stuff is just getting rid of stuff that was there and is no longer. Like the Bu- the Buford Jasper, Buford Jasper water is now no longer, the Hardyville water is no longer, and stuff like that, and we're still having on the ordinance, we're just cleaning it up. Two, the chairman is required to do a lot, and most of the things that he's supposed to do is no longer available, is just cleaning that up. And it also puts into the ordinance, which should have been done in a long time, is the, the amount of money that we are being paid, which is not clear in any ordinance. So, saying that, is there any questions?
Any questions?
I have none.
Okay.
And that concludes the workshop.
Mr. Fulmer?
Yes, sir.
Anything that you would like to talk about before we...
No, sir, not at this time. Do you want to entertain a break until 6:00 PM? House? Okay.